Welcome, everybody, to the regular monthly meeting. The Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is January tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building is also being offered in a live streaming feature. The meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting. Instructions for providing public comment in advance of tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, would you summarize any public comment received prior to this?
No public comment was received, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment. Silent reflection out of the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes. The previous meeting is written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
So moved.
The motion is there a second? Questions or comments? In favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote. We have a full compliment of our board members this evening, and I would just like to recognize a couple of our guests. Of course, Commissioner Barrett Standish is with us this evening and State Representative Napoleon Nelson. So, thank you for being here with us. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session as part of its January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four workshop meeting to discuss two personnel matters and two litigation matters. And at this time, I would like to invite former Commissioner Barrett Standish to be honored for twenty years of service to Springfield Township. Come on up, Barrett.
Come on over here. See. See. Okay, good. All right, here we go. I'm proud to introduce Resolution sixteen twenty-five, whereas Baird M. Standish has been a resident of Springfield Township for over thirty years, and whereas Mr. Standish has been an active member of the community in many ways, including but not limited to a member of the Board of Directors of the Germantown Branch of the Settlement Music School, past member of the Christ Church Presbyterian Preservation Trust and the Listening Hearts Ministry at St. Paul's Church in Chestnut Hill and many other civic and service groups. And whereas on July thirteenth, nineteen ninety-four, the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township appointed Mr. Standish to serve as the founding member of the Springfield Township Shade Tree Commission, a commission that has been responsible for the creation of a shade tree planting plan as well as the planting of numerous shade trees on township-owned lands, in particular, in with the Tree City USA program and the Township's annual Arbor Day celebration. And whereas Mr. Standish was appointed by the Board of Commissioners to serve as a member of the Springfield Township Planning Commission in November of nineteen ninety-eight to enhance communications between the Shade Tree Commission and the Planning Commission, thereby advancing the goals and objectives of both advisory boards. And whereas Mr. Standish was elected to the office in November of two thousand and oh-three and sworn in as a member of the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township in January of two thousand and four, faithfully serving for twenty years as the representative of Ward Five. And whereas Mr. Standish was nominated by his fellow commissioners to serve as the president of the Board on two separate occasions, January two thousand and six to December two thousand and six and January twentieth to December of two thousand and twenty-one, and as vice president on three separate occasions. And whereas his fellow commissioners and township staff relied on his constructive acumen when the decisions were made to rehabilitate the historic Black Horse Inn by serving on a committee that was created for that purpose, as well as the reconstruction of the township's municipal campus, which opened in two thousand and seventeen and serves as a community, will serve as a community for many, many decades. And whereas Baird was always, will always be a friend and a leader in Springfield, the Springfield Township community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, join the Springfield community in recognizing the contributions and the outstanding leadership of Baird M. Standish in this community. That is my resolution. So, congratulations. Thank you very much for all your service. I can hardly get through all the paragraphs here, you know.
Well, we're gonna take a vote and we're gonna clap again.
Okay.
So we have.
You get to do it in French. That's right, that's right.
We have a motion.
That was a motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick comment, real quick. I had the pleasure of serving with Baird for the last five years. When I got on the board, between Baird, Jeff, and Glenn, there was almost sixty years of representation on that board. And for a township that prides itself on continuity and the benefits that that kind of continuity and longevity brings, it really was extraordinary. It's extraordinary to have you now gone because you did bring a level of very thoughtful pragmatism to this board, where at least I took away the imperative of keeping the streets clean, lights on, you know, just for basic local governance in terms of that. But you will be very, very missed, and I certainly greatly appreciate the next year for all the time.
Thank you.
I have a comment as well. As Commissioner for Ward Five, I would like to say thank you, Baird, for your service. We, and I speak on behalf of the rest of the constituents. We thank you for your years of servants, and, you know, I have large shoes to fill, and I'm looking forward to serving. Thank you.
And as a friend to Baird now, and one of the newer commissioners even here, I also would like to comment that I really appreciate the strong mentorship, leadership, and kinship that we've developed. And I hope that although you won't be serving alongside me, that we will continue our friendship and neighborliness, as it turns out, as we move forward. Really grateful for all the lessons learned. And something I think is unable to underscore the thoughtfulness that Baird has put forward in his tenure here, in the time that I've been here. He really spends a lot of time, or had really spent a lot of time thinking about every issue thoroughly, thoughtfully, and every side of every issue, and I find that to be such a tremendous example and leadership example for me moving forward. So, thank you, Baird, for all that.
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Get in the minute.
And Baird's good works have not gone unnoticed, even if he in Harrisburg. And Rep. Nelson, do you want to come up and say any words?
Hang on, Pete. We're still gonna vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Well, Baird, I mean, your level of dedication for such a long time, and as Susie said, your thoughtfulness will not be forgotten anytime soon. So, it's been a pleasure, and thank you for all of that. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Great. Rep. Nelson, will you come forward and?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, Harrisburg is noticed. And so we have a citation. It's not as long. And I won't read it because it does have so much of the same information. It does call out one noticeable difference, or at least what you may have omitted, which is that Baird is a graduate of Yale someplace and Massachusetts Institute of Technology, which is, says everything as a fellow alum.
Building W. thirty-five.
That's correct. Most have no idea. We will be judged for it. But no, and so my proclamation is a little bit shorter. It is, again, just in awe of the work that you have done on behalf of this township. There are an awful lot of folks, some in the room who weren't born when you started this work. And that, not me, I was around, but it's an amazing accomplishment. And so we all thank you, and mine is signed by myself and the Speaker of the House, Ms. Joanne M. Clinton. I don't think she's on that one. I'm not, it's not a competition. It's not a competition. But we thank you on behalf of a grateful district, and thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for lending him to the township, sharing him with us all. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have just one last thing we want to present you with. We realize you had spent a lot of time in the Shade Tree Commission. Okay, but we couldn't get a shade tree here. But we promise that later in the spring, there will be a tree dedicated in your honor at the public location that you choose with a nice little plaque about your years of service and everything else. But in the interim, we do have this for you. Okay?
It turns into a game show.
Yes. Not how much we can put in hand. This is supposedly a tree of wisdom. It is not deciduous. I should leave it outside in the wintertime, and then it loses all its leaves. But, you know, it's a small token of your affection for all things growing. And it comes with instructions. Congratulations again.
I can't say enough, but this is my family. All I can say, and I'm gonna miss you all, and it's been a wonderful time. So, here we go.
Thank you.
Thanks, Baird.
Congratulations.
As long as I have to.
Yeah.
You wanna do a quick picture here with the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Up here.
Okay.
Barbara, why don't you come up?
She's coming up.
Why don't you come up?
Yep.
You want us to?
Thank you.
All right.
Sort of like an eagle.
On the floor, you are going, or something like that. That's it. All right. Yeah.
All right, we're on to committee assignments. We need answers.
Yeah. Clear out.
Okay. Thank you.
I am.
All right, this time I'd like to announce the committee and liaison assignments to the board for two thousand and twenty-four. Jim Lee is the committee assignment for public safety and the liaison to the emergency services board. Commissioner Ratsevong will serve as the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee Head, and her liaison assignment will be the Parks and Recreation, Parks Recreation and the Recreation Center Advisory Committees, along with the Walnut Avenue Steering Committee. Commissioner Wilson's assignment is community development. He will serve as the liaison for the planning and historical commissions. Commissioner Cobb's assignment for the Administrative Fiscal and Zoning Affairs. His committee assignment is for the zoning hearing board. Commissioner May's assignment is with the Environmental Resources Committee. His liaison assignment is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Commissioner McNamara's assignment is Public Works and Facilities, and her liaison assignment is the Shade Tree Committee. And finally, Commissioner Morris's assignment is Cultural Resources and will serve as a liaison to the Library Advisory Committee. The board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. In conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Okay, there is no public comment. We will go into the committee reports this evening. I do not have a report, so we will go to the Chairman, Committee Development Committee. Excuse me, Community Development. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a number of resolutions. Try and be brief. First one is Resolution sixteen twenty-five, Land Development, thirteen oh-one Mermaid Lane. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen twenty-six, a resolution granting preliminary slash final land development approval for the property located at thirteen oh-one Mermaid Lane, Windmore. The subject of land is, the subject of the land development is the construction of a twenty-six hundred square foot storage building and a one thousand square foot addition to an existing single-story warehouse building. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next resolution is sixteen twenty-seven, Subdivision Land Development, nineteen oh-two Pleasant Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen twenty-seven, a resolution granting preliminary slash final subdivision and land development approval for a property located at nine oh-two Pleasant Avenue, Windmore. The plan calls for the subdivision of the existing fifteen thousand two hundred square foot property that is presently improved with a single-family detached dwelling to create two new lots measuring fifty-two hundred square feet each, upon which two new single-family detached dwellings will be constructed. The plans also require the installation of below-ground stormwater management facilities, landscaping, and other improvements. That is my motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick question. And county engineer felt sufficiently confident regarding the stormwater management concerns that brought up the filters or could be good enough in terms of keeping a lot of the soap out of the fire. Maybe thirty-seven years.
Yeah, I presume so. As you know, Mr. Woodrow invited the person who spoke on that in that regard out into the hallway. That's like twenty minutes, half an hour, twenty minutes. I have heard.
I spoke today on that topic, and he said he talked to people.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make the house, similarly, I raised the query about, just trying to continue to be thoughtful about these infill type of opportunities. They're rare by themselves in town, and that I think the comment for the public to know is I think we are always thinking about stormwater and how to be better. And just a reminder that this is improvement from what was there before.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next item of business is Resolution sixteen twenty-eight, Land Development, thirteen ten Roche Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen twenty-eight, a resolution granting a waiver to the land development review process in order to permit PICO Energy Company to create a new non-permanent commercial driving license training facility at the property located at three ten Roche Avenue, Orland. The proposed improvements include the placement of a sixty-by-forty-foot classroom trailer and eight-by-thirty-foot restroom trailer, new landscaping, and fencing. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. I don't remember the terminology, non-permanent. Is that just because it's their trailer facilities and not installations of buildings?
Yeah, they're not permanent. They can be wheeled off-site at some point in the future. And that wording was actually added by the attorney for PICO Energy in the approval resolution. So, that's how I refer to it as.
Any idea of duration?
Now, there's news, commercial drivers license rules and regulations that were put into effect, and everybody, including municipalities, the state government, and ability companies are having difficulty locating qualified drivers. So, the purpose of this facility is to take somebody who presently doesn't have a commercial driver's license and train them to operate these vehicles that are necessary in order to keep the lights on. That's the motivation behind it.
And these are not tractor trailers. They're the more typical white trucks that we see. Pico driving around all the time.
Boom trucks, service trucks, auger trucks, things of that nature. That's predominantly what's in their fleet.
Yeah.
So I guess the corollary is if you're interested in a new career, there, and it could be in your backyard.
Commercial driver.
Your boss.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next item, Mr. President, is a subdivision lot line change for forty slash forty-two Grove Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, from Gerald Rath Esquire on behalf of the owners of the real property located at forty forty-two Grove Avenue, Flower Town, extending the ninety-day subdivision slash land development plan review period from February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The subject of the application is a lot line adjustment that proposes to transfer twenty-nine hundred and thirty-six square feet of the land from the property at forty-two Grove Avenue to the property at forty Grove Avenue. The extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise their plans in order to comply with the Springfield Township Code. That is my
motion.
Motion. Is it a motion, really? It's a motion. It is a motion. Okay.
Then there's one clarification. I think it was said that the letter was from February fifteenth. I think it's to February fifteenth.
Okay, so noted. So we have a motion. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Okay. My last resolution is I move the Board of Commissioners accept, this is for one twenty West Whisickan Avenue. I move that the Board of Commissioners accept a letter dated December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, from Bernadette Kearney Esquire on behalf of the Mount St. Joe Academy, one twenty West Whisickan Avenue, Flower Town, extending the ninety-day subdivision slash land development plan review period through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. The subject of the application is the construction of a thirty-two thousand square foot building addition, forty new off-street parking spaces, a landscaped courtyard, and four new tennis courts. The extension of time will allow the applicant the opportunity to revise their plans in order to comply with Springfield Township Code. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My last item, Mr. President, is regarding the Historical Commission, and I move that the Board of Commissioners point our friend Baird Standish to fill an unexpired term of service as an alternate member of the Springfield Township Historical Commission. Mr. Standish's term of service shall expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. That is my motion.
Your motion. Is there a second? Should we call back in here?
We could.
Any questions or comments? You just can't stay away from serving Springfield, so that's good. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We will now go to the Chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
The Board of Commissioners approved the December check reconciliation, the amount of nine hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirteen cents, and the January bill listing in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents. And that's my motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next, I'd like to announce the zoning hearing board agenda for the month of January. The Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, January twenty-second, at seven PM in this township building, where they will hear the following three applications. The first application is from Andre Stefano and Beth Lesko, owners of the property located four oh-one East Mill Road in Flower Town. The applicants are seeking, requesting a variance with, for, to subdivide the property with a proposed lot having frontage on Cedar Lane. This variance has been requested to allow the proposed lot to have twenty-five feet of lot frontage on Cedar Lane instead of the, instead of the required seventy-five feet. That property is located within the A Residential District of Ward Six. Next application is from Timothy Mulvey, owner of the property located at three fifteen Clement Avenue in Orland. The applicant is seeking a variance to construct a replacement deck to the rear of the home that will encroach five feet in the required twenty-five feet rear yard setback. The existing deck conforms to the setback requirement. That property is located within the C Residential District of Ward Three. And finally, they will hear the application of Holy Martyrs Roman Catholic Church, owners of the property located at two oh-seven Olmer Avenue in Orland. The applicant are seeking a variance to use the vacant convent as a daycare preschool space. In addition, the applicants seek approval to install a ground-mounted sign not to exceed twenty-five square feet. That property is zoned within the B Residential District of Ward Three. Again, those three applications will be heard on Monday night, January twenty-second, at seven PM in this room. With respect to the application of Andre Stefano and Beth Lesko involving the property at four oh-one East Mill Road, I move that the Board of Commissioners appoint conflict counsel to represent the interests of the Board of Commissioners to oppose the variance request to reduce the required minimum lot with, on a public street from seventy-five feet to twenty-five feet in order to subdivide the property and construct an additional single-family detached dwelling. And that's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We will now go to the Chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Ratsevong.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion regarding Cisco Park Playground today. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of bids to secure competitive pricing to perform specified improvements at Cisco Park to prepare for the installation of new playground equipment and safety surfacing. The scope of work shall include bulk earth excavation, stone subbase, insulation of concrete curbing, perimeter fencing, construction of ADA accessible parking, and a paved walking path. The total estimated cost of the advertised work is approximately seventy-six thousand dollars. That is my motion.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And that concludes my report today, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Ratsevong. We will now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May. Thank you, Commissioner Ratsevong. We will now go to the Chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the recycling report during the month of December two thousand and twenty-three, Springfield Township residents recycled a hundred eighty-two point five tons of material with a household or participation rate of sixty-four percent. And that cost for the month was twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, residents recycled a total of two thousand seven point two tons of single stream recyclables, which was ninety-two point four percent of the projected tonnage. Weekly household or participation rate was sixty-one point seven percent and the average pounds per stop was fifteen point six. And with, uh, refuse and recycling containers, the Board of Commissioners would like to remind residents that household refuse and recycling containers may not be larger than thirty-two gallons in size or fifty pounds in weight when full. Oversized and overweight containers present a hazard to employees and increase the risk of injury. The longstanding regulations were developed by the township's insurance carrier to reduce injuries and potential workers' compensation insurance claims. Township residents are encouraged to purchase appropriately sized refuse and or recycling containers at any hardware or home improvement store or online retailer. Recycling containers are also available for purchase at the Springfield Township Administration Building between the hours of nine AM and four thirty PM. The cost of a container with this is just twenty-five dollars each. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. We now go to the Chairwoman, Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening. The first is the settlement agreement at Thirteen Shepherd's Way. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of a settlement agreement, declaration and reaffirmation of covenants, easements and restrictions concerning stormwater facilities between the property owners at Thirteen Shepherd's Way, Glen Side, PA and Springfield Township. The grievance sets forth the responsibilities of both parties regarding maintenance and repair of an existing stormwater detention basin located at Thirteen Shepherd's Way, along with the reimbursement of costs, expenses and attorney's fees that were incurred by the township to perform repairs to the detention basin following tropical storm Ida. Reimbursement to be received by the township is six, six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
While opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you. The second item is regarding Walnut Avenue Pedestrian Trail. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the advertisement of bids to secure competitive pricing to construct a six-foot wide asphalt trail along the west side of Walnut Avenue from its intersection with Orland Mill Road to Sandy Run Park. The scope of work shall include bulk excavation, vegetation removal, stone subbase, placement of asphalt paving, fencing and restoration. The Board of Commissioners would like to acknowledge the award of a grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars from Montgomery County that will be utilized to construct the trail. That is my motion.
We have a motion, is there, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
Quick comment, Mr. President, just want to acknowledge, um, the, uh, long cooperation and partnership we've had with, um, Sandy Run Country Club, not only with this project, but, uh, the stormwater management project that was completed in the, uh, last year that was actually put to the test, um, last night and held up very well. Um, but the partnership, uh, between us and the Country Club, um, is greatly appreciated. They've been great partners. Um, and, uh, this is just another project that, under that same, that same banner. I just want to publicly thank them.
Yep. Did it, well said.
Is there a start date for that project?
Uh, we would like to be able to get the project completed or substantially completed before April fifteenth. So our anticipated timeline is to get construction started early in March at the latest.
Your taxes done and get your travel. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. While opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We will now go to the Chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. That concludes our committee reports. The board is once again open to receiving public comment. Come to the microphone, please state your name and address.
The, uh, Walnut Avenue.
Name and address.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, my name's Linda Furlong. I live on Roche Avenue in Orland. Uh, Walnut Avenue, is that going to be, uh, the, the side for the, um,
From the Sandy Run, Sandy Run Country Club.
Oh, okay.
From the corner of the intersection of Orland Mill and Walnut, runs along the golf course and then there's a crosswalk.
I, I know exactly where it's at. Okay, one other question. When is Tankar going to be torn down?
Well, we've
It's such an eyesore.
Yeah, well, there's, there's been a lot of steps along the way, certainly. Um, for a few months, the, there's been a steering committee that was formed that has been meeting for developing a master plan for that site. Um, so I think we're pretty close to putting out a request for proposals for, for that design work. So, um, it doesn't make sense to tear down that remaining structure until there's a plan to deal with it.
Okay.
Because it does serve as, as, there's no fence there, so you'd have to reconfigure the site. So, once the plans get put together and probably within a few months, an architect will be on board, start that planning.
The idea is to seamlessly take down the building and then start the site work on the property so that it's an active construction site and it's not going to be an attractive nuisance for people to enter and exit the property and perhaps do illegal dumping and things of that nature.
Okay.
Actually, there is a tenant using one portion of that building, uh, currently.
Uh, probably, uh,
A watchman.
Yeah. Watchman. Slash tenant.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, um, public comment is now closed again. I will accept the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Can we bat a thousand tonight? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. While opposed, nay. Please record a unanimous vote and we are adjourned.